Welcome to our council meeting for January 16, 2018. In consideration around, if you please turn off your cell phone and other electronic devices. The invocation will be given by Nick, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly One, we are fortunate to live in a place of freedom and plenty, and we thank you for those gifts. As we conduct our business tonight, may we remember that we are to be responsible stewards of those gifts for the benefit of those who have trusted us with these positions of leadership. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this point, we're having a summary in of Lieutenant Wagner and part-time firefighter Rodriguez. Mr. Wagner, can you...
Hi, John Rodriguez.
I, Mark Wagner. I, Mark Wagner.
Being duly sworn.
Being duly sworn.
Hereby accept the position.
Hereby accept the position.
As police lieutenant in the Division of Police. Department of Public Safety.
Department of Public Safety.
In the City of Haynesville, Ohio.
In the City of Haynesville, Ohio.
And further promise.
And further promise.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of police lieutenant.
Of police lieutenant.
Of Fire of me.
Of Fire of me.
By proper authority.
By proper authority. Congratulations. Please. We have, uh, fire guys, come on, please.
Yes. (laughter) Hi, Jonathan Rodriguez.
I, Jonathan Rodriguez.
Being duly sworn.
Being duly sworn.
Hereby accept the position.
Hereby accept the position.
As part-time firefighter.
As part-time firefighter.
In the Division of Fire.
In the Division of Fire.
Department of Public Safety.
Department of Public Safety.
In the City of Haynesville, Ohio.
In the City of Haynesville, Ohio.
And further promise.
And further promise.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of part-time firefighters.
Of part-time firefighter.
Fire of me.
Of Fire of me.
By proper authority.
By proper authority.
So, um...
Congratulations. Please. We have, uh, fire guests, come on, please.
Yes. (laughter) Hi, Jonathan Rodriguez.
I, Jonathan Rodriguez.
Being duly sworn.
Being duly sworn.
Hereby accept the position.
Hereby accept the position.
As part-time firefighter.
As part-time firefighter.
In the Division of Fire.
In the Division of Fire.
Department of Public Safety.
Department of Public Safety.
In the City of Haynesville, Ohio.
In the City of Haynesville, Ohio.
And further promise.
And further promise.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of part-time firefighters.
Of part-time firefighter.
Fire of me.
Of Fire of me.
By proper authority.
By proper authority.
So, um...
Congratulations. Please. All right. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes from January 2, 2018, in our special meeting on January 4, 18?
Second.
Oh, there was a "aye"?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, there was a correction on the date. Um, can you...
It's, um, 1/2/18 and 1/4/18.
Great, great, thank you. So moved, now we'll move into visitor recognition positions. You now recognize visitors, please raise your hand if you wish to speak. When called upon, please use the podium, clearly state your name, and address into the microphone and note your comments for three minutes. Any dialogues should be directed through me as President of Council, although your comments or questions can be addressed to the Council, the Ministry, or both. Is there anyone on this side? Great. Anyone else on this side? And on this side? Okay, all right.
346 Virgwood Lane, Haynesville Ward 4. Mr. President, it's cold and snow's a lot more east of Ohio. We should allow snow and cold over the holidays, and we can expect more cold and snow to come. I know there were considerable number of complaints about the recent snow plowing efforts in the city, and as a result, we have the city manager read, the snow clearing process at the last council meeting, so residents now know the process exists. Thank you. But I believe many residents felt that this time around, the process failed to deliver satisfactory, desired results of actively clearing the streets and making them safer for residents within a reasonable timeframe. But even I was unaware of what the major issue was, so that I apologize. After talking with the city manager and assistant city manager about my snow plowing concerns, they indicated, given the existing budget resource limitation, the city is most definitely needing current service level objectives for snow plowing. That is, attempt to make the middle of the roads passable, not necessarily clear at curfew curve. City manager also pointed out, the city's only tool for salt, for ice, was salt, and we all know salt stops working after the temperature goes below 20 degrees. So as a resident, seems clearly that those ice rink intersections that I and others were complaining about, would just have to stay that way until an eventual rise in temperature occurred. Resource constraints and the lack of additional chemicals being available just won't allow anything more to be done. Suffice it to say that Haynesville residents should come to the realization that we are not a matter for Willoughby or an Eastlake. We have resource limitations, and as residents, we will just have to stop complaining or expecting more. We just need to live with the existing snow plowing service level because of the limitations and tools in our belt that we lack. But does Council think that's good enough, or do they think better results should be expected and can be achieved? If so, then what might it take to raise the service level bar and improve service level expectations? Clearly budget with resource limitations seem to be the fine issue myself. I would ask the following question, if Council does consider raising the bar. Does the process itself need tweaking, with more staffing, trucks, personnel, and solution? Do the number of man-hours and current overtime limitations need to be adjusted? Is process execution sufficient? Should personnel be provided with additional training? Is existing performance management plan sufficient? And are there any other processes, materials out there to deal with salt not working below 20 degrees? On a final positive note, the following comment was posted on Nextdoor on Monday the 8th by a resident, quote, "Just spoke to the fire driver who was currently working on the neighborhood this evening. He made several classes by my house this evening, which I was impressed by. He told me, he usually follows the other side of Haynesville, but he was sent to Hines Park tonight to try to get the streets back down to the pavement. He told me he couldn't believe how bad the roads were down here."
Your face.
And he was trying best to clean it up. I didn't catch his name, but I'll surely be following up to the email I wrote to the city this morning. The guy deserves real praise. Thank you.
Let's hear it again.
David Crisand, 1838 Pine Wood Lane, also in Hines Park. I'm here to express concern about the noticeable decline in quality of the snow removal, especially the holiday snow. This past weekend was better. I'm sure you've already heard numbers of complaints from residents about this. The past, the streets were fully cleared down the pavement, and the corners were almost overkill, where you had to go out and shovel the stuff that they put into your sidewalk when they cleared the corners. What's changed? Has there been a reduction, drastic reduction in the budget and overtime? Based on comments on Nextdoor and that were attributed to power operators, that might indeed be the case. How much was budgeted for snow removal this year versus last year? Has it gone down? Has overtime indeed been reduced? What's the actual level that Council expects the city to provide as far as snow removal? Based on some, again, on some comments, and these are second-hand, it would seem that salt is only being used on hills and curves. Was pre-treating being done? Haynesville Township puts beach use on all the streets in the event of a snow. I understand last weekend it would have been hard because it was raining, but Haynesville Township puts beach use on all their streets. The state does Kalsic Liquid Brine, is that being done? It took at least six or seven days for Pine Wood Lane to be cleared. Numerous contacts remained with Mr. Hackby residents to finally get it out there to be cleared. Greenfield Elevator was a sheet of ice, and there were accidents happening there. You stopped 100 feet from the brakes, 100 feet before the stop sign, you might stop on the other side of the intersection. It was, it was a sheet of ice. Where's the money from the road tax renewal going? Will snow removal cut because they need the money elsewhere? Honestly, and I've said this to Mr. Lewis, the money that was spent on sidewalk paths could be better spent on doing the streets. After this snowfall this weekend, when I came home from visiting in panel on Sunday, the sidewalk was better than the street. Maybe we need to just enforce ordinances required property, almost to clear their sidewalks. And lastly, as a candidate for mayor many years ago in the community combat in local elections, people don't vote Democrat or Republican. They vote, do the police come when they're called? In Haynesville, they still do. Police come when they're called, the Fire Department comes when they're called very promptly. They want prompt garbage collection. Hmm, sometimes we get that. They also want the streets in good repair and the snow to be removed. I think right now we're looking at three out of four. And is that acceptable to the residents? That's something we're going to have to ask ourselves come the next election. Is that level of service something that we're going to accept? Or will city council determine that maybe something needs to be tweaked?
Thank you. At this point, we're moving to legislation. If you wish to comment on legislation, you must request to do so at this time. Those make such a request will then call upon after the reading, any dialogue must be conducted through me as President of Council, although your comments, questions are, can be addressed to the Council Administration or both. Call upon, please use the podium, clearly state your name and address to the microphone, and note your questions for three minutes. Resolution number two, someone's like this, please come on. And resolution number three, first reading. Okay, we'll move into resolution number two, first reading.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to advertise for bids and to enter into contracts with the lowest and best bidders for furnishing materials, supplies, and services to various departments, divisions of the City of Haynesville, and declaring a raise.
This annual piece of legislation, this is to approve items, so we wanted to announce it, have it out all the time, such as chemicals, materials, and various electric stuff. And we are asking that this gets approved this week.
Any questions or comments? No? Any motion?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Mrs. Schu?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Donello?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Futter?
Yes.
Mr. Cap?
Yes.
To adopt?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Donello?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Futter?
Yes.
Mrs. Schu?
Yes.
Mr. Cap?
Yes, resolution passed. Resolution number three, first reading.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the City of Metter for the purchase of a drainage easement. Did you want pictures?
If necessary.
Some two of the pictures.
What pictures are they? Uh, with the job no worries.
This is a drainage easement that we started at the City of Metter's approach for. It's a piece of property that we own down on the, uh, water, where we house the, uh, the water treatment. If you look up at the, uh, upper part of the picture there, um, they're asking for an acreage of size of, uh, .048 acres of property. And, uh, what they want to do is put a storm range improvement down on this property. Uh, as you can see, it's clear from the, well, see, the northern, north, just towards the lake, it's the western side of the property. In talking to Frank McKee and the water superintendent, we don't have a lot of, uh, any issues with this, with this easement. It's not anything that we're going to be developing in the near future. And, uh, if you have any questions, um, I think you have, and they're proposing to pay for this easement. And if you have any questions, you know, they have to answer.
I have a question. Um, who, I see that they're going to pay for it. Who will maintain it?
Um, they will. Yeah. So kind of our storm, you know, we do our, our storm, drainage strategy, mowing, big issue always. Okay.
How many acres do we have?
We have a total of a little over 10 acres. Yeah. It's a, it's a weapons area, and there's not a lot of development that would take place there probably in the near future.
I don't know, you said the western edge, but can, I see the red line, I'm assuming that's all of our 10 acre, 10 square foot, whatever acres. So western edge, up in that corner? Do you want to...
I could probably go up a point here.
Uh-huh.
It's clear at the top of the picture, um, where the red lines act, or at the top, and it's in that little corner up there, off of right front.
Gotcha.
Can you go up a point at that?
I have a later point.
Well, later, later. We have a question. So do, are the residents involved in any of this? They don't have to, they're not going to be notified?
Well, they're notified to the city.
They have no...
Yep. Yes. This...
And what are they, what are they trying to drink? I mean, I can water, obviously, but from housing developments that are being...
From the road.
Just off the road.
Out the road, whatever, trains to the backyard. Yes, they come off the road. It's a storm drain.
It's pretty, uh, pretty drop, right?
Yeah, very steep, a lot of momentum.
Yes. Any other questions? That was, by the way, our beach. Haynesville's in the region where the standing trees are, in the west of the building. There's actually a concession stand and, uh, like a shower area. Was that... When I, when I went to council for the first time in like 1981, my, one of my campaign promises was I was going to have that beach reopened.
I'll go for you.
Not too well. So, any more questions?
Thank you. Can we just go three readings?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. This is the first reading. Presentation tonight, Fire and Police.
Our first medal, we're going to award medals tonight. Uh, the reading is going to be done by Lieutenant Mike Slovam. Uh, he was the supervisor on scene for this incident, and he's going to tell you more about it. And the officer involved is Officer Ryan Cooney.
On Thursday, February 2nd, 2017, at approximately 03:15 hours, Haynesville Police Officers Ryan Cooney, Matthew Tykast, Russell Tull, Brian Avery, and Lieutenant Michael Slovam were dispatched on 9/13 Brentwood Drive for the report of a male attempting a forced entry into an occupied apartment. The complaint victim, a 38-year-old female resident, advised a suspect, a 39-year-old age male, was her ex-boyfriend. The victim advised dispatch that herself and her two children, ages 5 and 13, were locked inside an interior bedroom. The suspect, unable to force entry, threw the apartment door, broke out a living room window, and crawled through it. Once inside the residence, the suspect obtained a knife from the kitchen before forcing his way into a locked bedroom, where the victim and her children were hiding. Central dispatch now advised that the victim's phone line was open, and a physical altercation could be heard taking place in the background. Officers arrived on scene and could hear the sound of screaming emanating from within the apartment, but despite repeated efforts to force open the steel door, officers could not reach it. At the front of the apartment, Officer Cooney was able to reach through the broken glass window and unlock it. Officer Cooney then made entry into the apartment through the window, placing himself at risk, exposing himself to danger. Once inside the apartment, Officer Cooney moved across the living room and unlocked the front door, allowing other officers to enter. Officers then began making their way down the main hallway toward the sound of banging and screaming coming from the bedroom at the end of the hallway. Officers observed the suspect standing just inside the bedroom closet with his right hand and arm concealed. The victim was observed to be to the immediate left of the suspect. As officers continued down the hallway toward the bedroom, commands were given for the suspect to show his hands, and then followed by placing himself on the ground. The suspect ignored the officer's commands, and the victim suddenly moved across the bedroom and out of officer's sight. The suspect followed behind the victim, at which time officers observed the male was holding a large knife in his right hand. As Officer Cooney began enter the bedroom, he observed two children sitting on the bed. The children were in a panicked state. The family dog was also in the room, barking and backed into the corner between the children, the victim, and the suspect. Officer Cooney observed a large couch that was placed on the far northeast wall of the bedroom. The victim was seated on the couch. The suspect was observed holding a large kitchen knife in his right hand while leaning across the victim, pinning her down on the couch. It was a tense and fast-evolving situation. Officer Cooney began shouting commands at the suspect, throw out the knife and get on the ground. The suspect suddenly took the knife and shoved it down into the couch cushion next to the victim. Officer Cooney climbed over and across an overturned dresser in the bedroom toward the closet in the northwest corner of the room. Officer Cooney directed two small children into the closet behind him, placing them out of harm's way. As officers continued to shout commands at the suspect, he continued to fail to comply. Officer Avery warned the suspect that if he didn't comply, he would be tasered. The suspect continued to refuse to comply, and Officer Avery deployed his taser. The taser had a partial incapacitating effect on the suspect, who stiffened and launched its hold on the victim. The victim was then able to free herself from the suspect's hold and escaped from the room, after which time the suspect was taken into custody without enhancement. While all responding officers did an excellent job, Officer Ryan Cooney is being specifically recognized for his individual acts at imminent personal hazard of life in combat with an armed adversary. Officer Cooney, without hesitation, exposed himself to broken glass and to the potential attack while crawling through the small window, and once inside the apartment, to the potential that he may be alone in combat, should he not reach the door to allow others inside. Officer Cooney once again placed himself in imminent personal hazard of life when he traversed an overturned dresser while confronting the suspect in a small bedroom, placing himself between an armed adversary and children. These actions performed by 20-year police veteran Officer Ryan Cooney on the 2nd day of February 2017 exemplify the highest commitment to service at the cost of personal imminent hazard to life, which actions are to be commended by all. Please join us in honoring Officer Ryan Cooney as his wife Amanda Cooney presents him with the compact cross medal.
I traversed the snow path to Arby's earlier, I didn't get anything for it. I didn't like that sound. All right. Very proud of, we're very proud of Ryan. Quite something. Uh, the next officer, uh, we would like to invite up, Elbert, and, uh, this one, Officer Albert Jordan. Uh, yes, the Albert Jordan, the same Albert Jordan, picture on the cover of this year's annual report. Uh, during the, during the entire year of 2017, Albert demonstrated tremendous work ethic throughout the year, in the year, in many areas of duty. Uh, he was a regular at almost every community event, as many of you saw. Uh, and beyond that, uh, he was a faithful attendant to the VNA lock watch in the, Mr. Axe group, as well as many other enforcement details that we had around the department. He was always, always there for us, always volunteering in the apartment. In addition, he helped us establish a good relationship with a number of area churches and businesses. He's constantly stopping in and talking, and, uh, you know, and certainly putting his best foot forward for us. Uh, during 2017, he led all officers in charges. He was responsible for 332 charges on 236 individuals. Uh, he was, uh, frequently, uh, took the lead for us when there were complaints by residents to council for, uh, carbon areas, and, uh, you know, with red lights, speeding, stop sign violations, you may. Uh, for all those reasons I mentioned above, I'm proud to award Elbert Haynesville Police Department's Departmental Excellence Medal in recognition of his efforts.
Hey, how are you? Good to see you. I could have told you you were here, I was out there freezing waiting for you. Here you go.
It's Jordan. I missed you. Thanks, oh, thanks, oh.
Next up, the, I couldn't threaten this, my time on this, okay? This is pretty responsible. And he's, and he's made it quite clear what happened to my budget. This may be moving. So, uh, the annual report, I remember the annual report, uh, that previous page, you all have it, uh, was Elbert Jordan and Officer Jesse Cudnick. Uh, in February this year, they won the prestigious Law Enforcement Award, the Lake County Blue folks' award. Uh, many of you remember back in November of 16. Technically, it qualified 17, but they were given the award here in 17. Uh, they pulled a man and saved his life. Danny Jones was pulled from Riverside Drive from a crash, his car, car caught on fire, and they saved his life, so. That, we're really proud of. So we got that lovely colored photo taken by, uh, Williams Smith, our detective, standing in the... in the corner. I give that, him and Eric Silvy are professional photographers. Shall I attribute you that, otherwise I could get sued. I'm very careful. Page two, just to give you guys a rundown, just to make it easier. Page three is the department personnel. This one's out of work. That's all right. Right there's the general info on the city of Paintsville. I learned a little something. I had to go to our city website for some of those things. I could not remember them on my own. But the Division of Police was established in nineteen oh three, and I'm the very lucky clerk to the chief of the city of Paintsville. Can I put our Facebook page on there and our city web page? There is the departmental personality phone list. We have a lot of individuals, not just the officers, and a lot of the officers understand this and agree. We have our CSOs, our SROs, our clerks, and a lot of people in there doing hard work. I tell you, that clerk job is not something many people, you can pay them even overtime, to do. We did an eight-hour day of it. So a lot of hardworking, a lot of hardworking folks. We plan on adding a few names that's coming here, as long as I don't put too long in this presentation. Retirements. Karen Deans is pictured there. She asked for that picture with all the chiefs that she served under. And with the years that those chiefs served, and I thought that was nice. We sure will, Miss Karen. Thirty-four years dedicated service on the job. It's a long, long time. She remembers a lot of stuff that I don't even know about. Mr. Gurley would be the only one to match that. Jay Sharp, twenty-nine and a half years. Jay Sharp, twenty-nine and a half years dedicated service. That was his shadow box. That's something that the FOP does for officers, very nice. He worked in a couple of departments. He had been originally from the Charlotte Police Department. That's where we have picked him up from. And so they have various patches and badges. Kind of hard to see in there. Continuing on to the next page. Chief Pauling retired in twenty seventeen, twenty years dedicated service for the city. He began in May of ninety-seven. Paul Mattsniken, sixteen years. He is currently obtaining citizenship for Wales United Kingdom. He stopped back and visited us, says most of his songs are in the hall for a couple of weeks. He found career masters and he's moving closer to this citizenship there. And Matthew Shane left in twenty seventeen to take a job at Beechwood, and he was highly productive, very helpful. He was also a member of the city schools. Nice young man, and we wish him the best in his future career. Next up, department awards, other than the ones you saw today. The other award that was given to our officers, that is Detective William Smith on the left and Lieutenant Toby Forget on the right, they received the Kristi Noacke Award. Had a male in Argon Arms back in February sixteen, and this male was threatening to shoot himself in probably one of the most tense standoffs in the history of our department. For forty-four minutes, this male threatened to shoot himself, and I specifically remember Officer Smith telling me there was a moment, he was holding the gun out to the side, and he actually could see down the barrel of that shotgun. And our officers had to restrain, not to shoot, we had to continue on. We felt that we had it under control, and they were able to bring this gentleman in and avoid having to shoot or hurt him, and that was, we were very thankful for that, and I'm sure his family was too. They certainly earned that award. So that's for them. They are both here in the boardroom. Next up, the moneymute. Tayor Wurman, the only member of our moneymute, but she has four horses. And she switches them off. This is Saber in the pictures on the left. That was a party in the park this year. She was down Main Street. Those photos are courtesy of Eric Silvy. And on the right, that was her winning. She brought home first place in the NAPEC championships. Some kind of a horseshoe. She told me, "Don't ask questions, just say NAPEC." I said, "All right, help us with the horse people, no." All right. She does have four horses though, and you may be able to see another one later on in this slide. Next up is our K nine unit. Officer Collins and his K nine Sip. Officer Collins, very active officer, one hundred and twenty-five arrests in twenty seventeen, and he often assists other agencies and our own when there is a narcotic detection required suspicion of narcotics. And Matt keeps himself busy and credit to the department. Next up, SWAT team. Naturally, Tiesel has the photo on there. It's the only picture he can provide me. I want to know. I think that's the game, but there's always one of them. That's Officer Tiesel on the right, Detective Tiesel. And on the left is Lieutenant Slope, name tag, you don't barely tell. And that's the SWAT truck. We have five members on the team. Detective Tiesel, Lieutenant DeCaro, Lieutenant Slope, Officer Rogers, and Officer Cooney. SWAT team consists of, it's multi-agency. It's Lake County sheriffs, ourselves, the Joga County Sheriff's Department, Ashleyville County Sheriff's, and the Madison Township Police Department. Next up, bike patrol, new for twenty seventeen. Officer Rogers on your left and Officer Cruz on your right. And they enjoyed their first year this year. This coming year, we're looking to possibly add one or two officers to join them and help them, and we utilize them for community events. We're going to be doing more so. And also, there's some special enforcement initiatives and operations to take into account when we need to be quiet and sneak up on people with equipment. Not to Arby's, but other places. All right. Clerks and volunteers, hard workers here. Jared, he's running the show alone up there right now. Tay is helping, but he is the lone man. We are currently seeking help for him, and we prepared new interviews. Pat Holing was the former director of Lake County Human Services and is now a volunteer person. We are extremely thankful to have her. Over two hundred and fifty hours a year, she gives us, and she is quite a sharp lady. And Gloria Hager, not quoted, over one hundred and fifty hours, very quiet and hardworking. She's been with us for many years. We're thankful to have the both of them. And Stephanie, who makes so many things happen in our office. Stephanie Flatt handles the department budget, payroll, and Grant, which we like a lot of, and many other administrative tasks, and she really does. She's always there to help us with anything. That's the training list. I know it's a little small. That's why I made copies for you guys. It's a lot of training, highlights out there. We had a couple graduations. Myself, Lieutenant Forget, Lieutenant Slope, graduated from the Certified Law Enforcement Executive Program. It's a thirteen-month program earlier in the year. It was nice to give us some progressive ideas that we've been able to use here in the department. Ton of other good schools. Lieutenant Wager went to the three-week Fields class, but up and down the list, a lot of good stuff in there. Officer Cooney went to the FBI hostage negotiations. Next up, calls for service. Calls for service up this year, eight point six percent, quite a jump. And over the five-year period, we're up to over twenty-six percent. So certainly our calls to service, you know, have been steadily increasing, and we have, we've been dealing with that. We have four officers, those four officers that we hired in the middle of last year, all made it on the train and are doing very well, and that is all been dramatically, yes, I thought it would. But the calls to service certainly increased. Surprisingly, motor vehicle accidents still are down. Next slide. They're down four hundred and nineteen compared to four hundred and eighty-two, and they're way down from two thousand twelve. That was a rough year for motor vehicle accidents. Some of that can reflect bad winters on the freeway and things like that, but accidents way down in twenty seventeen. I don't know about this weather right now, how we're going to do twenty eighteen. I'm a little worried. Next up, the crime stats. As you would expect with call volume's increase, the crime stats were up. Nothing alarming in there that we can see. It's always alarming when they're up, but nothing alarming, and I think we're thankful that even though we had increases in crime, we've had also still very strong convictions raised here. So definitely not the place to commit crime.
I assume speeding is because of the roads in Paintsville?
Absolutely. Our enforcement efforts, you know, we talked about Elbert, he certainly wasn't the only one. Our enforcement efforts on traffic stops, you can look at that traffic stop. That's our self-initiated activity. We went from sixteen hundred and forty to twenty-four hundred and almost thirty. So our officers were out there really, really going at it, you know? Dramatically, a dramatic increase in that. The red lights and stop signs, you know, that's a massive increase too. And it's a positive thing. And that call volume goes up, but we're out there, we're showing, we're out there, we're very visible, and thankfully, we've been very effective with the convictions and stuff. They make them commit crime, but hopefully only once. Next up. All right, now we're getting our photos. This is the fun stuff. That was at the National Night Out, SWAT truck came out, and they were letting everybody try it out, and they have an honorary SWAT member there. And that was actually for Nate. That was someone who turned on Pearl Street earlier here, and gave us a little, I did deep coffee that morning, and it was kept us on our toes. Turned out to be good though, but you don't know. You don't test it by shape and age. Not a good idea. At the bottom, of course, there's Mr. Tiesel again and Mr. Hughes, who's standing on the low. Quite a bit taller than everyone, but it's deceptive. They have a large marijuana plant. That's for some of the many narcotics busts we had towards the end of the year here. Thankful for taking those off the streets. Next up, three of those four officers we were talking about. That's on the from the left, Kevin Love, Dallas McCloud, and Evan Gantz. And I'd like to all three of those, and Mr. Garcia. They're all very welcome, very happy to have that addition, helping us out. Mr. Wacker graduated from Fields, as I mentioned earlier. That's Bill Healy, the director of the North Coast Polytechnic Institute on the right. Jason Hughes helped out at Lake County Fair and volunteered and was with the kids. They had some arrow shooting, and we were down there demonstrating our lack of skill in that area to have some fun with the kids. And then Opal, that's Opal's only picture, so I had to put it in. The Pogo Horse Contest, our own city manager was the winner. Opal's a beautiful horse that Tay has, and he was at quite a few events, I'm sure several of you saw Opal at a couple of the events. Next page. There's Jared stressing out. That poor guy buried under paperwork. Those are case files on his desk. Yes, indeed, there's a felony case there that I wouldn't want to touch with a dent foot pole. I can see it. And then the long pole. Elbert, ever the community guy, kids down in Icey Park. Down there just out when the community saw a bunch of kids start talking, showed them the police car. And then shortly after my swearing in, some of the local chiefs stopped by. Next up is, this is Elbert, and this is a good one. Up against a man thirty years younger and a foot taller, Elbert's on one foot with one hand, and he made a shot. If you act like that, it deserves an award in itself. The hands needed badly. Not let him go. And at the bottom, Reverend Mirable. We did a lot, we did a lot with Reverend Mirable this year, and he was thankful and we were thankful. It goes both ways. We did the Thanksgiving handout with him, and that was during Christmas. The FOP donated quite a large check, one hundred and fifty dollars to help out families here in our community. That was nice, very nice man, Reverend Mirable. Next up, Elbert again. My dude is everywhere. At the National Night Out, we won the Best Police Car Contest. Cleanest, we had a clean, he cleaned that baby up, and it was nice. And our residents voted in, so there he is again with the trophy. And at the bottom, that's our newly renovated police squad room, and I point out, it's empty because they're always out on the road and working. That is what our squad room looks like most of the time. There are rarely officers sitting in there other than the type.
If you don't give them chairs, tell me that's the...
I really come up with good stuff. Strongness, that's it. And the very last, not least, this is the end, hopefully I didn't run over any. That was a beautiful picture someone took at the end of the National Night Out of the city coverage, with a blue sky, unedited. That's just a, that was a rough, beautiful picture. That's where it all begins and ends for us.
I see that you've used cars and bikes and horses. Are segways next?
They're waiting at the moment, that's the problem. I don't think you'd make an Arby's if you didn't, right? You stuck in that snow line. I said, "What do you want?" Just got you any questions?
I would just like to make a comment. Obviously, thank you so much to Officer Cooney, Kudnick, and Jordan for their service, but thank you to every single officer that you have in your department. Being the child of a Paintsville City Police Veteran, I have an insane amount of respect for what you guys do, but also for what your families do every day. So just if you could pass that on, I appreciate everything you deal with.
Thank you so much. Thank you guys, everyone. Thank you for everything.
Appreciate your information. Thank you. We're going to move into new business with boards and commissions. Basically, I just want to go through, and we had a few changes from last year, and with our, so we're into our community reinvestment with the council. And this year, we have Councilwoman Katie Jenkins as our chairperson. Mr. Augustin is our vice chair, and Tom Fitzgerald is the third member. Moving into Economic Development Committee, we have Katie Jenkins as chairperson, Nicholas Augustin as vice chairperson, and Tom Fitzgerald. Finance, we have Jim Foder as chairperson, Lori Danello as vice chair, and the third councilperson is Christine Shoup. Fire council, our government, CLOG, which I'd like to, we'll be guys meet again soon. Lori Danello, she's the chair and only one. And Housing Issue Task Force, it will be, the chair will be Jim Foder, and councilwoman Katie Jenkins will be vice chair. Parks and Recreation Commission, chair will be Christine Shoup, vice chair will be Nick, and the other council will be Tom. And moving into Citizens and Safety Committee, we have Councilwoman Katie Jenkins as the chair, Councilman Jim Foder as vice chair, and Councilman Nicholas Augustin as the third member. What we want to do this year, that we have done in the past, that we would like to meet at least four times a year with these, maybe more, and then after we get done with the meetings, we'd like to have the chair or both chair come and do a small presentation on what was discussed over those meetings, so that way we can keep the public informed on what's going on with these different commissions if they're not available to go. And I just like to conclude, thank you for the support of council to work on these different boards and commissions, and also the support with planning commissions and other boards that we have with the city. We do have some vacancies that we're going to advertise, and we'll have our council or our clerk get those out as soon as possible, so we can get these vacancies filled. Okay, at this point, this and our new business, administrative reports, law director?
Nothing at this time.
City manager?
I would like to go over the snow procedure. So as public service employees work through the snow procedure, the superintendent and I have been discussing process and procedure on a daily basis. We are benchmarking ourselves against other communities and identifying room for room for that in the city. Public services currently works three eight-hour shifts during the snow season, which is December through March. This allows for twenty-four hours a day, five days a week of snow and ice removal on straight time. On the weekends, our employees are paid eight hours of overtime per employee per shift if is worked. Our department has the responsibility for a hundred and twenty-five lane miles of roads, forty-one cul-de-sacs, twenty-seven dead ends, and nine city-owned parking lots to plow. We have three or four two-and-a-half-ton trucks on the road per shift. There are four employees on the first shift and three on the second and third shifts, for a total of ten employees. We also use employees from other departments during day shift to assist in snow removal. Our current level of service is set at passable and safe roads, for which Brian and I work to accomplish with the resources we have. Comparing to other communities, we compare our level of service, resources, and shift work to seven other municipalities in Lake Iaga and Kaigoga County. These comparisons are Charbin City, Concord Township, Mener City, Witcliffe City, Paintsville Township, Willoughby City, and Mayfield Village. Prior to moving on to the analysis, it helps to understand the expected level of service for each of these. We did not receive everyone's level of service, but we do know that Charbin expects black pavement and Mayfield Village expects wet roads. So analysis number one was resources. First, the one item that sticks out to me immediately is salt storage. Out of all the communities, Paintsville is extremely limited on salt purchases because we are extremely limited on salt storage. Because we are unable to have a lot of salt on hand, we are careful to use salt responsibly. Next, when comparing lane miles of road to a number of employees, Paintsville seems to be at a slight disadvantage. If we look, if we look just at lane miles, Concord Township, Witcliffe City, and Willoughby City are comparable. Those communities have thirteen, eighteen, and thirty employees respectively. That is in comparison to our... That is in comparison to our ten employees. While we are talking about these three communities, each has six trucks on the road while we have three or four. Analysis number two, shift work. If you look at just lane miles again, Concord, Witcliffe, and Willoughby are comparable. We use the same shift work schedule as Witcliffe and Willoughby, except Witcliffe does twelve-hour shifts on the weekends. Concord does two shifts. One is eight hours and the other is twelve. They do not plow from 11:00 PM to 3:00 AM in Concord. It's also worth mentioning, none of the townships do main roads. The county does all mains, so the townships only do residential streets. By looking at the structure, we are in line with our comparables as far as how the shifts are organized. Analysis three, salt usage. Besides the amount of salt on hand, which we previously discussed, the actual procedure for usage is in line with all communities. The largest difference is spot treating versus treating roads and stops. We spot treat roads and stops along with Concord Township, Mender, Witcliffe, Haynesville Township, and Willoughby. Based on the data analyzed, Haynesville City is not out of line as far as processes and procedures. Shift work schedules and salt treatment procedures are in line with surrounding communities. The analysis does show a lack of salt storage, employees, and equipment, which puts our process at a disadvantage in comparison to other communities. Potential solutions. If council would like us to get to the level of service quicker or to propose an increase in the level of service provided, we can bring back options with supporting data. These options could include increasing the overtime budget during winter months, building a new salt storage facility, increasing staff and equipment, and/or a combination of all of the above. All I need is clear direction on what level of service council would like to see, and staff and I can bring scenarios back to either council or committee of council with estimated costs.
I remember about twelve years ago, we looked at building a new salt dome. And it was over a million dollars around twelve years ago. And it was something that, in the direction of council at that point, where we could relook at it and get a committee together. Mr. Foder.
In terms of the salt and the amount of salt that we have at hand, are we saying that we can only buy and receive salt once a year and throw off the, and that's it? Or can we stagger and purchase salt and...
We stagger our salt purchases. So if you see, we purchase about 2,500 tons a season. And we can hold 800 tons. So we store 800, we're out there using it. As we're getting close to being down to minimum, we reorder more.
Okay, so once we reach 2,500, if we need more, do we reorder?
Yes, but we're staggering that 2,500 throughout the season because we can't actually store it. We have to be using it.
Once we use 800 tons, then we have 1,700 tons in our salt bin, so we could add.
No, no, no. We can only hold 800 tons. Only.
Got it.
So whether we're using it or not, it only holds 800 tons.
Got it. So, but the part I don't quite understand is if we use 400 tons, and we know that we, why don't we order, and we've only gone through December, but, you know, we're probably getting into solutions now. Why would we order another 400 just to maintain that?
We are. The difference and why we're at a disadvantage is other communities can store more. So although they're purchasing some equivalent to the amount we're purchasing, like Witcliffe bought 2,500 tons, they already have 3,000 tons in storage, where we can only hold 800. So over the whole year, they could have several thousand more tons than what we can hold because we don't have the facility to hold it.
Mrs. D'Amlo.
I guess my question would be, what I think I've heard from the residents is not the lack of salt being put down as much as it is the lack of plowing being done. And I don't know if that's what other council members have experienced. So for me, it's more about the plowing than about the salt. And I heard that the issue with the salt has to do with temperature. So sometimes, so my one question is, is there other products besides salt that we could be purchasing? And then the second part is, you know, if we had additional employees, we would probably need more equipment. I'm guessing those two things go in the hand. So I just wanted to confirm. More foot, employees, and more equipment.
Right. So I didn't bring all that with me tonight just because we are not all the way in the weeds until I know council wants to move forward. I didn't want to spend too much time. But I can do a quick overview of what you're asking. So we do have eight two-and-a-half-ton trucks. We have the equipment. We just don't have the employees to fill the equipment. So we wouldn't need to buy more trucks at this time. We wouldn't need to employ more people if we want to go in that direction. And that is an annual cost that's going to be occurring for a long period of time.
So I guess what I'm hearing is that, you know, the first step in process is validating the need for improvement. So what I'm hearing is we validated the need for improvement. So the question then is, how do we improve our processes?
Right, so that goes back to, would council like this analyzed further? And if so, where would you like it discussed? And then staff and I can take it to either council as a whole or finance committee, find out level of service, and then we can go back and put numbers to what that looks like.
I would love to see the finance committee quickly to discuss, you know, how ultimately it's gonna affect our budget and what we'll use with the extra.
Well, that would be part of it, except for in terms of level of service and what materials we're looking at. Because it's not just salt, it's the whatever other materials that we can put down when the temperature gets below fourteen degrees or whatever that is, it's all no longer works.
So the only, out of all the comparables, the only community that purchases anything other than salt is Concord Township. They purchase a product called Clear Something. And it does, it's a chemical additive that they use on roads that are, it's a de-icer basically. No one else in this analysis purchases anything other than salt, except for Concord Township.
So, a couple things. I, when I get calls from residents about the way that the roads are, I always take into account the way my road is. And I live on one of the most side roads and the last one to be plowed. When I was growing up, we had a superintendent who said, "If I can get out of my driveway, you're going to school." And he had a snowboarder, so we went to school a lot. So my approach has always been, if my husband, who drives a performance vehicle, can get off our street, then we're doing okay. And so I kind of, I think my mindset has always been passable. So I think the first step for council is to determine if we want to change that level of service. And so I think it should be coming before council, before it goes to the finance committee. Because we need to determine, do we want to improve that level of service? And then how do we want to improve it? Do we want to improve it with more manpower? Do we want to improve it with more manpower up front and, you know, attacking it harder when the storm begins? But I think that it's, I personally feel it should come here first so that we can review the recommendations that you have and then go to the finance committee to evaluate if it's feasible.
I guess I would change it one step further than Kayla. The staff is working with the equipment and the limitations daily. And so I am in favor of staff recommendations, the council discussing, and then going to finance committee.
It sounds like they don't have the staff to run trucks, so we need to find out who would want to hire, you know, employees.
And I was thinking about that too, Mr. Happ. And I was thinking that we have seasonal employees here in the summertime for the extra burden that our Parks and Recreation staff endures in the summertime because of the grass roaming. So I'm, in my mind, kind of generally in that direction, including seasonal winter employees as well.
Mrs. Shoup.
Couple things. When you think about a snow truck, snow park, Robert, and you say two-and-a-half tons, I picture two-and-a-half-ton pickup. Don't we have big dump trucks?
No, the two-and-a-half ton is the...
It's the dump. Okay. So you're gonna need a CDL, right? So having seasonal employees on a CDL is, we're gonna be competing with a lot of other places?
And I would say, being, and Mr. Happ has testified to this too, but being in the type of business that my husband has had, there's a lot of construction people that do have CDLs that are out there with their labor. And I think that they would be working for, they would be looking for seasonal winter time work in that field.
I kind of agree with Lori, Katie, that the staff and so on and so forth, those things should come here first. If we're gonna change the level of service and talk about that, and maybe that's a work session, I don't know. But it is one of those things where we could probably just make some decisions at that point and then go back and get the pricing. And I don't even know why we need to, if you come back with the pricing, what's the advantage of running it through finance committee?
Where's the money coming from?
Well, Andy can figure that out.
We have no money. Treasure is true words.
The direction that staff is looking for is what level of service? Once we know what level of service, then we can figure out how many people that takes, what kind of chemicals that takes, all of that, all the weeds stuff. But we need to know what the expectation is to be able to bring those recommendations back. Without knowing what the expectation is, then we're gonna have to do numerous scenarios which...
Well, okay, so I only know of wet roads, passable and safe. What was the third one?
Black pavement.
Okay, so where, is that, are those the three? That's it?
Are we deep?
Well, I mean, where the levels are in there. I would add in that currently where our focus is, is, you know, we do the primary and secondary. And I think that the tourishery roads are probably the ones that we're receiving the most complaints about. So the question really is, is the, is, for council, for me, is, is the amount of use of your road, does that determine the amount of service you should be receiving? So if you're on a, you know, tourishery road or, and I think we even have four levels, don't we? So there's even a...
The dead end and cul-de-sacs are the last.
Are the last, okay. So if you're on a dead end or cul-de-sac, is your passability of that road less important than mine on Skinner Avenue, which would be a secondary avenue? So, and one of the things that came to my mind with the phone calls I was getting was, you know, not everybody has the truck that Ms. Jenkins' husband has. Not everybody, some of the people that I talk to, there's people with medical conditions. There's people who don't even have vehicles that they're trying to get out. They have to get out on foot for whatever reason. So I guess, you know, that has always been one of the complications of the way that we've identified and structured how we have these levels of service. And so those people on those dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs are getting less service than I'm getting on Skinner Avenue.
Or they're getting it later.
Yeah, but they may need to be at passable and I don't. So...
Yeah, so what determines why you get plowed at 8:00 AM on Tuesday versus me getting plowed at 8:00 AM on Tuesday?
Well, should we just look at it at different levels? Like what would it be to have a road that's completely dry? And see where we're at right now. I guess there's like three different tiers.
Is that a direction? Am I to go back and look at that?
What would be, what would be between where we are and clear pavement?
What? Which is...
What pavement?
A slush on the...
Okay, so a slush.
On the road.
Okay.
Yeah. And just to answer your question, if we did change the levels of, if we do treat everyone equally, then everyone equally will have terrible roads.
At the current service staff level.
Right, because by stretching it even thinner, then everyone's gonna have bad roads. Where right now, at least, the mains are clear. If you can get to the mains, you're gonna get to work. And that's what we're trying to do is pass through. I mean, I live on a road that is one of the last ones to get paved too. And if I can get to the main road, then that's where we are as a level of service right now.
If we were gonna be from our safety services as far as how it is for them getting down the road?
They, yes, we stay in touch with police and fire on a daily basis. If they are having any trouble at all, we immediately drop everything and make sure they get where they need to be. So we are, the police and fire talk to our road crews constantly. And actually, to, just to make it clear for those who are listening, if you have an issue after hours, so after 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or on the weekend, all the non-emergency police number dispatch, and they will dispatch the trucks. So council's not on duty 24/7, I'm not technically on duty 24/7. So we have people on staff through dispatch. The public can call dispatch, they will dispatch a police officer who will see if it's truly a bad road condition. If it is, we'll get a truck out there immediately.
Have we pinpointed a map in terms of where the calls are coming from?
Complaints.
With complaints?
No, unfortunately, we're not very data-rich when it comes to this particular issue.
I'm not sure if one size fits all here. I know that certain parts of the city, they have drainage problems. And, you know, by the Cedar Brook area, the roads might be icy. So they might need a little bit more salt than Charlotte Street because we don't have the same drainage problems that they do. So I, I'm not sure if we can blanket this across the city that... We live in northeast Ohio and we have snow. I mean, it's just kind of a matter of fact. So I was riding in the township today and they still have snow on your road.
Well, and I think, I think that it's really easy to get, and this is something I encountered last week when I received a complaint, somebody had contacted us and said, you know, I was just in Mender on Route 20 and all I could see the road clearly, it was obvious. And my street still has snow all over it. And I had to remind the individual, well, there's how many thousands of cars that drive on Mender Avenue on a daily basis. Like not only are they plowed, but there's also high level of traffic. The higher traffic, the less snow that's gonna be remaining on the street. And so it's important, you know, to not get into this comparison game where I'm going, okay, well, Route 2 is clear. Well, Route 2 is a state route and there's how many people driving on it every day. But I think, I think what we just need to kind of figure out is, are we happy with the level of service that we have? Or do we, as a council, based on the feedback we're getting from our constituents, feeling that we need to improve the purpose of the service?
Well, and I would also, if we start collecting data on accidents, where are the accidents occurring? Are they occurring because of the fact that the roads are ice-covered? And that we need to be aware of that and target those areas? And maybe salt isn't the total answer. We need to upgrade in certain areas.
I'm not sure that's data that our chief could give us very easily. Usually it's noted, it's noted with if it's unsafe driving conditions.
I called Brian this past week and told Brian we had three accidents on Mender Avenue near Turf. They did pretty promptly send the trucks. But the accidents were observable and then we could respond and call. It's the ones that maybe there are, it's just that we don't know about the area. Absolutely, I can maybe get it out quickly. So I guess what I'm hearing is that we could improve. But I don't think you know.
But at what cost?
Yeah, continuous improvement. They're always striving to improve. I mean, that should be just embedded in our organization. With everything we do, there's a, after something occurs, we do a plus delta or whatever, see what went well and what didn't go well.
Your house is wet compared to the last two winters.
Well, this winter is significantly worse than last winter. Yes.
I brought a snowmobile, I never got it through last year.
Yeah, there were a lot of, there were two heavy snowstorms last summer, the entire winter.
That was the one time, signboard called from my house twice last year. It's certified to be four or five times.
So we guys, council, we want, before and.
Well, it sounds like we still need to talk with council and I wonder if we should have a.
A work session.
Work session on.
My only, the only concern we have is, if you take, if you take a look at our schedule so far, I think we're scheduled through February, you're versing.
It's gonna be the swi-.
So I think we almost have to bring this back to council.
Can we just agree, we want to explore the next step up, which is wet roads? And, and that we want some data on that, what we would accomplish with it?
Yeah, as well as some data on where the complaints are coming from and, you know, without, I have no amount of time spent, but where, where the complaints are coming from and where the accidents occur. We did also handle on that as well.
I guess I don't agree that we need wet roads, I agree that we need passable roads. And I think that our residents need to be able to get out of their driveways, because they don't want a four-wheel drive truck.
So, we're talking about getting to the level of service quicker?
Yes.
Getting to passable.
Getting our ass faster.
Yeah.
Which would be, I would assume, similar to what we would need to accomplish wet roads, but just not a sustained amount of work.
The funny part about that is, maybe it's not funny, but it's sad. My neighbors were complaining every time they cleaned, cleared their apron.
Somebody plowed.
The horse came by and put that.
Well, you're never gonna win when it comes to snow.
Right, that heavy, heavy snow right on the end of their driveway.
I do think.
So we're talking getting to passable quicker as a starting point.
As a starting point.
Okay, that's a good place where I can start. And then from there, we can discuss what the next level looks like. But at least that's clear direction. Now, is it coming to council as a whole or is it going to a committee?
Yes, I'd say council as a whole.
Council, great. Committees take too long.
Okay.
Facebook fast.
We'd figure it out in July.
Um, are we gonna attempt to do a work session or are we bringing it back to council and meeting business?
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
As soon as you can get it.
Next meeting?
Yes.
We're gonna be in, end of January, we're gonna be in the pipeline.
I did want to say one thing, Jim. My husband worked for the county and he would get a lot of complaints about people having snow dumped at their apron. And one of his statements was, to the cops and residents who made the stop and then the truck is, "I'm non-discriminatory after the same last snow with everybody's apron."
So I, I guess it's part of my question too right now, is since we are looking at a couple of weeks down the road, I, I don't think we're supposed to have a major storm, snowstorm, in fact, it's supposed to be a month. So, I mean, does our budget allow right now? I mean, we're getting close to overtime or can we give?
We do overtime.
I know, but are we getting the, the amount that was appropriated in twenty-eighteen for overtime?
We're, we're, we're at, survey at, at this level will allow us to get through the snow season at what is budgeted. So we are conservative, but we are still meeting the budget that was given to us. So at this time, we're okay. Unless you want to get to passable quicker, which is the discussion we'll have at the next meeting.
Okay, let's do that. Um, we're moving forward then to correspondence.
The next regular council meeting will be on Monday, February fifth, at seven-thirty. There'll be a work session, Monday, January twenty-second, for the electric grid presentation in Court Room One at five-fifteen. The Paintsland Recreation Chili Cookoff is January twenty-seventh, from one to three, at the Morse Church Memorial. The Daddy Daughter Social is February tenth, noon to two, at Morse Avenue Community Center. And the private office, February second.
Thank you. Closing tablets, Nick?
Just want to congratulate you today. Um, thank you, Chief, for the presentation and thank you for your service and everybody's work. That's all, thanks.
Jim? Jim? Attended a newly elected official's workshop out over at Leighton. And there were, in fact, there were three of us there. And then already served on panel as one of the experts. You know, some of the things that they, they said were to know your community, work together, respect one another. And then it also talked about, you know, keeping the community informed in terms of information as, tell the truth, tell it all, and tell it first, and if you have to, tell it all. They talked about the sunshine law a little bit and they said that, you know, it's probably, you can use email or text messages, and I know that we're having a conversation about that internally here, but it can't be pre-scheduled, there can't be the majority of people participating, and there can't be decisions made. That's kind of the litmus test of whether or not you're violating the sunshine law. So if those three things fall into place, we're, we're not doing something right. And in fact, the case that they were, that came to our light was, that where two people were looking to be removed from council just because of that. So we, we need to be aware of that. They also talked about having a strategic plan and having five-year goals, working together as council, trust and respect again. Identify strengths of council members and use those in committees. They also talked about being the face of the community and knowing your community. They said, watch out for Facebook, what you put on it because of the fact that you are the face of the community. And so, you know, if it's posted on Facebook, there's no such thing as a delete button. Be prepared for the media. There is no such thing as off the record. And again, they emphasized, know the sunshine laws. Now, they did pass out a survival guide for newly affected, affected, likely municipal cities, but it's from Georgia. But, and it's about ten or fifteen pages, well, maybe, or thirty-three pages, as a matter of fact. So, I'm not sure if I'm gonna reproduce all of this, but I might take a couple of pages out, hit the highlights, give it to Valerie to reprint and either send it out and, and so that we got that.
Mr. Parker, could she maybe scan it and email us?
Uh, could do that. Probably the only other thing that I have is, you know, before this meeting, we spent some time on council people becoming aware of their personal, personality and, and I think that as we are moving forward with professional development, it's imperative that the seven of us, along with the city administration, figure out, because we have in the budget professional development dollars, what that's going to look like for twenty-eighteen. What's our strengths, what's our weaknesses, and where do we need to send people and report back to make us a more effective council? And that's what I got today.
I just want to, you agree with Nick in terms of all of the presentations that were here today, thank you. And the police officials, as far as the swearing-in with the fire, fire, fire fellow and so on. Honestly, last night, I attended the Martin Luther King's, I wanna say extravaganza, they have a different name for it, but it was it morally.
Celebration.
Celebration. And it was, they opened with a combined choir of Riverside High School and, and Harvee High School, and I was spelled out. They sounded like they were, well, they should've been recorded, and they sounded so phenomenal. I think there were several people that I noticed that kind of had choked up tears. I mean, it was wonderful, the whole presentation was wonderful, and I'm still glad I went, so that's what I have.
Thank you. Tom?
I'd like to thank the chief for his presentation. It was very informative and also the same as the other, other council members, congratulate those who received the awards tonight or sworn in. That's it.
Katie?
Um, I'd like to, of course, welcome firefighter Rod Ricas. Congratulate Officer Wagner, I'm becoming lieutenant. Again, Officer Cooney, Cunick, and Jordan, congratulations. Thank you to all of our police firefighters. And then also, I would like to take a moment to thank Monica and Jessie Biginski for the behavioral analysis and training that we received before council today. I think it was, in the lightning, I think it was interesting. You know, I think probably most of us have done some form of, of leadership or personality traits tests over the years. I think it's always interesting to do one I've never done before and I enjoyed it, so thank you.
Lori?
Uh, thank you. I guess certainly congratulations are in order and I'm certain that all council members are extending that. But I guess what I really want to emphasize is that it's certainly a privilege to be part of the ceremonies, part of the recognition awards. As a council member, it's probably one of the biggest honors that I, I have. And so I appreciate being able to be a part of all of that. Certainly is a lot of hard work going on every day in our community by our employees. And there are those that are putting their lives on the line daily and certainly appreciate all that they do. I wanted to add to what Ms. Chu said, that Harvey Choir was actually featured on Fox Eight News, I think, the morning report? So if you Google that, if you wanted to see that, if you missed it, they have performed at the NWAACP Martin Luther King Day Celebration Ceremony yearly since I've been a part of that organization and that must be at least five years. So, the combined choir with Riverside was new this year and was extremely amazing. And the most amazing part is, those kids got there, I think, three or four o'clock, and that's when they really began practicing. And they used the expertise of two different, well, three different fire directors. And so each of their talents were also displayed. And it was, it was very heartwarming and uplifting, as was the entire celebration. And one of the other things that I noticed at that was that Lake Erie College is really making a very strong effort to become a more diverse college. And some of the initiatives that they have are very interesting to learn about and it's exciting to be part of that. They've also extended themselves a great deal to Harvey High School to recruit students. And they have also started a mentorship program with their students at Harvey High School. So those are things we have as a community that grow up.
Thank you. All right.
Oh, one last thing. Maybe we could ask Randy to look into opening the Paintsful Beach again with the Joe Gurley concession stand.
Yes.
I'm sure between Joe Gurley and Joe Hada, they could probably relive a few useful days back there and bring it back to where it was.
It's a definite winner.
I'm just gonna try to throw me with the old crowd.
I want to thank everyone that came out tonight and I, the comments that were made, and I think I agree with the, congratulations to the police and fire, their mayor, and at this vote, can I get a motion to?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Donato?
Yes.
Mrs. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. Foder?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
And Mr. Hacken?
Yes.